Good afternoon, everyone. We are here in room 309 for our Housing Education Joint Committee. We, this is a two o'clock PM agenda. We have one agenda item, SB 941. We do have a time limit on our testimony of two minutes. So we'll get started. SB 941 is relating to the School Facilities Authority and authorizes the School Facility Authority to partner with public and private agencies to develop teacher and educator housing. Vice Chair for the testimony?
Kiyoni, School Facilities Authority, in support.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chairs Hashimoto and Woodson. Vice Chairs Ayu and Martin. Chad Kiyoni, Foria, School Facilities Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support of SB 941 SD2. I would like to highlight in our testimony, the current language of SB 941 SD2 contains a drafting error that accidentally excluded Waipahu High School from the breakout. Also, we'd like the committee's consideration in expanding where these projects can be built to include off-campus locations. Available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Buluson, HGEA, with comments? HGEA?
HGEA.
It says H, no, HGEA. No? Okay. Laverne, HSTA. I cannot speak too good, so it's-
Aloha, Chairs and members of the committee. Laverne Moore speaking on behalf of Osetuwi, President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. We strongly support this. Our teachers truly need a place to live, so go for it and build our houses. No, forget the houses. We want rentals. Bye.
You know what houses?
Thanks, Laverne. Nancy Jones, Hydroponics Alternatives LLC, in support. Ryan Ozawa, Individual, in support. Will Karen, Individual, in support. Seb Jones, Individual, in support. Disa Haig, Hagi, sorry, Nanakuli Wainai Complex Area, in support. Any other individuals who would testify on this matter? SB 941. Chair, seeing none.
Members, any questions? SB 941. Seeing none?
Okay. Ed, members, any questions? I have a couple of questions for SFA, please. I'll try to keep it truncated. Thank you so much for being here. What methodology will SFA employ when it comes to figuring out particularly what locations to establish these rentals?
Yes, but, so we would focus on those three pilot locations right now in there, Nanakuli, Waipahu, and Mililani. You mean area, general area, or how we break down that just specifically?
Just generally speaking, because we know that you are a new authority, but looking at, as an example, what are some of the areas of highest need? I imagine that there is robust conversations happening between you and the department to figure out things like, where are the most vacancies? Where is the highest concentration of parts to fill that is not filled? What type of factors and variables are you looking at to figure out where to establish these opportunities?
Yes, exactly. Looking at the areas of greatest need, where the vacancies are, also considering traffic and where these teachers want to live. We are currently working with HSTA, developing a survey to ask, to actually ask members where they would like to live and what type of units, one, two, and three bedroom.
Okay. And in the past, we know that the Department of Education has tried to establish some rental housings. Some of those were, in fact, underutilized. You have a lot on your plate. You're also helping out with expansion of high-quality early learning opportunities for all three and four-year-olds regarding preschools and pre-kindergartens.
Right.
You have articulated a desire to establish spaces that solicit a certain positive experience for the Kiki. I'm wondering if you have a vision as it relates to looking at these rentals for our teachers and other workforce needs?
Yeah, absolutely. So currently, we're working with our agency partners. We'll continue, obviously, the Department of Education, HSTA, HPHA, HHFTC, using just a bunch of different data points. We want to make sure we build these pilots in the right places, and we want to build the right type of unit.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none.
Thank you.
All right, members, seeing no other questions. We're actually going to roll right into decision-making so we can let Ed go off into the next hearings. We're going to do an HD1. We're going to actually add back in Waipahu High School, back into the bill because it was taken out inadvertently. We're actually going to blank out the appropriation amounts, but note in the committee report that the total amount requested is 185 million with the cost breakdown of 65 million to Mililani, 60 million to Nanakuli, and 60 million to Waipahu High School. We're going to amend the Section 15 that has our existing amendment to kind of clarify. We're going to take the SFA amendments. I think their point is well taken that we need to broaden that, I guess, definition of who they're developing for. So we're going to allow it for teacher, educator, and staff, and we're going to include that in workforce type of housing. And we're going to make sure that it's, it can be done within the school campus or located off-campus. But for the specific appropriations, that's generally their powers. And for the specific appropriation, we're going to just make sure that the funding is for teacher, educator, and staff employed in their respective complex area and other associated individuals who qualify for workforce housing within a school campus or located within a two-mile radius of campus. So I think for these specific three schools, we want to put a little bit more conditions rather than that Section 15. We're going to defect the effective date to June 30, 3,000, and allow staff to make technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none. Vice Chair for the vote?
Members, voting on SB 941 SD2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Eslen?
Aye.
Representative Keela?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Martin?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Todd?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, same recommendation. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Chair, vice chair vote aye. Rep Eslen?
Aye.
Rep Capella, excused. Rep Lachica?
Aye.
Rep Martinez?
Aye.
Rep Matyoshi?
Aye.
Rep Purso?
Aye.
Rep Quinlan, excused. Rep Todd?
Aye.
And Rep Garcia?
Aye.
Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, members. This meeting is adjourned.[762.11]
To draw down funds minimally, and we have not seen any substantive moves. So that would be my inclination, that this be effective after a period of time where we see the drawdown of Medicaid funds. But is that something that is doable for the department?
Absolutely. I mean, it is our intent. We have the ball rolling, we have timelines, and it is our intent to begin billing at the end of the summer, beginning of the school year.
Okay. My concern is that there needs to be better communication as well with the Medicaid Director, and I know that they issued a new policy in January, and so we need a lot of reporting back to this committees to see that there is an actual, real commitment. Otherwise, we would be leaving lots of dollars on the table. But thank you, thank you for your transparency.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A.S. Armstrong, do you want to expand upon that? I know that you've been working on Medicaid reimbursables, et cetera, if you want to add comments. You look like you wanted to add comments, I don't know if I misread that.
No, thank you very much. Heidi Armstrong, Department of Education, and like A.S. Kalama shared, we are working on it, it doesn't happen instantaneously, and we haven't been sitting and doing nothing. We do work closely with DHS, we do work closely, not only in partnering, but seeking their guidance, and we keep them abreast, they keep us abreast of what we're doing.
Thank you for that. Members, any other questions? I have a couple of questions for DOE also. I have a couple of questions for DOE. Yes, thank you. So I think you spoke to LBAs and BCBAs, but did you mention how many RBTs you currently have in the system?
I can get you that number.
Both within House and contracted?
Absolutely. We have a total of 96 behavior techs or RBTs. We have 85 vacancies, though, and for contracted, we have 626 contracted RBTs.
You have 620 contracted?
626, yes.
And just for the edification on the members, can you please just quickly go into what are some of the first actionable steps once a educator identifies potentially that a student might need additional support, like via ABA services?
Sure. So all of our students receive ABA through an IEP or an Individualized Education Program. So any concern that an IEP team member or a school team member or a parent has about a student is brought to that team. There is an assessment that is done, a functional behavior assessment, which is completed by an LBA, and then the team makes the decision with the LBA's recommendation and input on whether or not a behavior intervention plan, or what we would call ABA, is necessary, and to what extent, and for what duration of time.
So if a parent or parents are not supportive of the plan, but the professionals want to move in a certain direction, which direction do you go?
If parents are not in agreement with the recommendations of the IEP team, they do have opportunity to either contest or protest that recommendation, either by mediation, which we encourage, or they also have due process rights.
Okay, thank you. And how much interface does the teacher have with the licensed behavioral specialists through this process? Is there robust communication that's happening between the two?
Absolutely, there should be. This is implementing the child's educational plan. The specially teacher is the lead for that plan, so yes, there needs to be communication, ongoing communication and consultation.
What's the frequency of communication, would you say?
I would say at least weekly, if not more.
Once a week, okay. All right, thank you so much. Just quickly for DOE H. Is DOE H here? DDD, thank you so much. Per your amendment, can you explain or illuminate as to what exactly the purpose or the tenet cause of the tenet outcome of your proposed amendment? Because it's not clear past, you're saying that you want an exemption.
The reason why we want to continue to be able to use people who are not RBTs but under the supervision of an LBA is workforce. There's just not enough people, especially in the rural areas, to be able to find that match between somebody who can supervise the implementation of a behavioral plan and those that would be required to be an RBT. So we had initially asked for the exemption several years ago, and quite late, I realized that there was this vehicle and that our exemption was going to end next year. So the reason we want it is so that we serve for behavioral plans only adults because they receive the intensive behavioral interventions through their EPSDT benefit. So we want to be able to cover those few people, adults, who may be getting a behavioral plan, that those to implement don't have to be an RBT.
Okay, I understand. All right, thank you so much. Members, any other questions? Okay, seen none, recess. Yeah, sorry. Thank you, reconvening for decision-making on one bill, SB 1340, SD 2. This is with regards to the DOE and ABA practices. Members, we would like to pass this with the HD 1, accepting DOE H's DDD's request, which is filed on page 5, under section 2, subsection A, paragraph 6, striking out the word "design." We are also deleting the sunset date. Again, this makes the exemption permanent. Also, we would like to implement, delay the implementation date to 2024, 2025 school year. We would also request that the department report back to the legislature by February 2024. Also defecting the defective date to our standard 630,3000. Questions, comments, concerns? Please go ahead.
Sorry, Chair, I'd like to request a ruling on a potential conflict of interest.
What's your conflict?
My sister owns and operates a school and clinic for young children with autism, and she has, at least previously, contracted to DOE to do ABA services.
No conflict because it's due to a broader class.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair, please.
Voting on SB 1340, SD 2, Chair recommends passing with amendments. Chair, Vice Chair vote aye. Rep. Ebslin?
Aye.
Capella excused. Rep. Lachica?
Aye.
Rep. Martinez?
Aye.
Rep. Mathyoshi?
Aye.
Rep. Prusso?
Aye.
Rep. Quinlan, excused. Rep. Todd?
Aye.
Rep. Garcia?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members.
Health Committee, same recommendation.
Health Committee voting on SB 1340, SD 2, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Amato?
Aye.
Representative Iligon is excused. Representative Kobayashi?
Aye.
Representative Mizuno is excused. Representative Nishimoto?
Aye.
Representative Garcia?
Aye.
Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Good afternoon, convening for the Single Committee on Education. Today's date is the 21st, it's 2:10 PM, and it's 2:28 PM, and we are in Conference Room 309. We have about a dozen bills on the agenda today. To start us off, we have SB 1232, SD 1. This is with regards to authorizing the state librarian to impose fees with approval of the Board of Education. First up, we have state libraries in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Committee. My name is Stacy Aldridge, I'm the State Librarian, and the Hawaii State Public Library System stands in support of Senate Bill 1232, which will enable us to be more efficient in the way that we implement new services and enhanced services that can be financially supported, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you so much.
And I'm here for answering any questions you might have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Next, we have BNF providing comments. BNF's here, they're not here, that's all I have on my list. Anyone else? Seen none. I had a question for BNF, but they are not here. Anyone else have questions? Vice Chair, please go ahead.
I just wonder, I'm sure you saw the BNF testimony, just concerned about commercial concessions, and is that something that you think you folks can manage?
I believe so. We're not really looking at commercial concessions, we're looking at in hand services, so like our facilities, we do have a charge to use the facilities, or if we tried to provide a new service, that we want to have some financial support behind. So for instance, looking at offering batteries that people could take home to charge their devices if they had power outages, there might be a small fee. So we're just looking at a way to support programs that we have.
Thank you, I have a follow-up question. So you're saying that it's not commercialization activity that incorporates private activity? You're saying that it's other types of fees and services that you want to potentially partake in?
And provide to the community.
And do you know how BNF is defining private activity? Because they use that language a lot.
I am not clear, I would have to follow up with them.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seen none, moving on to the next bill. We have SB 1023, SD 1, HD 1. This is our Early Learning Expansion Proposal. We heard the House version HB 961 earlier. First, we have Office of Lieutenant Governor in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee, Michelle Kurihara-Klein on behalf of the Office of the Lieutenant Governor and our Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke. We stand on our written testimony and very strong support of this measure, as this is one of the LG's priority initiatives, and we thank the Committee for their swift action in moving House Bill 961, its companion. Thank you, I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Next, we have DHS in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, members of the Committee. My name is Stacy Tonaluchi, representing Director Betts today. The Department stands on our written testimony, and we are here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have EOEL providing testimony in support.
Aloha, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, and members of the Committee. Jordana Fer with the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill, but do want to highlight just a few small amendments that we are respectfully requesting. So as you know, EOEL currently serves children the year prior before kindergarten. There are two other sections of Chapter 302-L7 that references four-year-olds, so we are just requesting in addition to include three-year-olds to those other two sections as well. The specific language is in our testimony, if you have any questions about that. Thank you for letting me testify and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, we have the University of Hawaii, providing comments. Dr. Halbert, BNF, also offering comments. We have Hawaii Association of Independent Schools here in person in support. DHS. I know, it's not that loud, we have a discussion. We've heard this bill before, so.
Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, thank you for allowing me to testify. We are, Hawaii Association of Independent Schools is very strong supportive of this bill, because we think the funding for open doors is very important to families who have preschool-aged children. I would like, and we stand on our written testimony, but I would like to highlight one thing. Since 1996, the state has entrusted the licensing of all private schools to HAIS, and there's currently 114 private schools in the state, and the Western Accrediting Association has made us a partner in the accreditation of schools in Hawaii that seek that, and there are currently 51 of those schools are accredited. 59 of our schools have preschools, and we very, our accreditation procedure is very rigorous, and if a school has a preschool, there's a whole chapter on that that we follow through on, and we would like to be recognized by DHS as a valid accreditation resource for the accreditation of private schools. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for being here, thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks, providing testimony in support, here in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. Kaila Purielitz, Director of Early Learning and Health Policy with Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. You have my written testimony, I wanted to highlight a couple of the amendments that we're respectfully requesting. What we're looking for in those amendments is really to just understand, kind of connect the legislative intent with the practical realities of running a preschool. So we understand that part of the proposal is to increase rates of reimbursement, so that way preschools are adequately able to pay for their staff at a living wage, among other things. And so to do that, one of the things is making sure that the reimbursement rate is looked at, you know, repeatedly over, you know, every two to three years. So that's one of the amendments. The other one is, from a practical standpoint, there is, I know there's requests or consideration to have higher reimbursement rates, so that way preschools can get that higher reimbursement rate to go to that living wage, but if a preschool is constrained by the tuitions that they're charging for these non-subsidy families, that means that they're likely to never get to that 1,500, if that's, say, that's the number. For a practical reality, it would just be an administrative nightmare for preschool to have one set of tuition for non-subsidy kids and another for subsidy kids, so they can actually access that. So the Second Amendment is essentially saying it's allowing those preschool providers to have, get that higher reimbursement rate regardless of what tuition they have, so that way they're incentivized to take on preschool open door students. Happy to answer any questions in that respect, and on any other part of my testimony, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for being here, thank you for your expertise. Apologies. We also have Chairman Peters here from the Early Learning Board. We should have called about first. Testimony in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Woodson, Vice Chair Martin, and members of the Committee. The Early Learning Board appreciates the opportunity to support this bill, and defers to both the Department of Human Services and EOEL for any other particulars within the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peters. Next, we have Democratic Party of Hawaii, Stonewall Caucus, testimony in support via Zoom. We also have Early Childhood Action Strategies, providing testimony in support via Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and other Committee members. My name's Vivian Eto'o, and I'm here on behalf of Early Childhood Action Strategy. I apologize for my inability to be there in person, but appreciate the opportunity to zoom in. ECAS stands on our written testimony in support of Senate Bill 1023, and we're available for any questions. Thank you for hearing this measure and for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Rainbow Family 808 in support, not present. Kamitaki in support. Community Schools in support. Casson Foundation in support. Parents and Children's Together in support, and we have one individual in opposition available potentially via Zoom, Linda Elento, not present. Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Oh, please go ahead, you have a?
Can I testify?
Yeah, please, because we didn't start. Identify yourself and your affiliate.
Good afternoon, Chair, and Vice Chair, and all the members of the Education Committee. I'm here as a parent and also a grandparent. I'm very familiar with open doors program, as well as the childcare subsidies over the years.
Have you just said your name and your affiliation?
Oh, I apologize, you did ask me who I am. Linda Elento. And again, I'm a parent, I'm not associated with any organization, but the reasons I wanted to bring up on why I'm not in support of this particular bill, I feel like a couple of things are being overlooked, and actually, I just had a short conversation with the Director of Department of Human Services, and I'd like to request that more questions get answered as far as the testimonies and so forth, because like you mentioned, we've heard this bill or one very similar to it several times right now, about the early intervention, and one thing that's important that I wanted to bring up was?
Are you testifying on SB?
Early Intervention, 1023?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. On page 2, towards the bottom, regarding the accreditation, it specifies the National Early Learning Accreditation Organizations. It does not include ACSI, which is the Association for Christian Schools International. Just like HAIS, that accreditation is very valuable, very important, but our statute is not even recognizing it. And what happens to a parent? I'll give you a different example than the one we just heard. We can go to a preschool in Kanioli, they have the WASC, as well as a different type of accreditation. So they've chosen not to go through the preschool accreditation through NAEYC, and that just means for the tuition reimbursement for a family, it's the $200 difference. It's at a 75% rate rather than the 100% rate that Kamaaina kids would be able to provide, or the open doors would be able to provide for that particular student. So I'm not familiar with the school that would charge differently for subsidized or non-subsidized, I have no experience with that. I do have experience with the fact that my son and grandsons have been to ACSI accredited preschools for almost 30 years, and ACSI has been part of the reimbursement, I guess, the tiers. However, the way the bill's written, if you're not going to consider ACSI as a national education organization, whenever, excuse me, whenever the deadline or the effective date becomes, you know, becomes into effect, they're not going to be included here for any of the preschool open doors. So I'd like to ask that the Committee look at that particular portion of the bill, and just in addition, I very support the adding the three-year-olds, but I do want to ask that the Education Committee also continue how that also affects the children who are born in August. They turn five, but they won't be ready for, they won't be able to enter kindergarten until they're six. What difference does that make? Well, people like my grandson, who are born in August, because cutoff date's end of July, he'll be facing his third year of preschool, which he'll have to homeschool rather than go to the third-year preschool. So that's a concern of mine, and because it's already in the statute, and we're looking at, looking at that, and the director having discretion to approve a school, but right now, as it's written, I don't even think ACSI, as well as HIS, would be recognized, and we ask that, we create a bill that would recognize it. And thank you very much for your time and listening.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your testimony, thank you for joining us today in person. Anyone else wishing to provide testimony on this proposal? Seen none, members, are there any questions? I have a quick question for DHS, please. Thank you again for being here with us today. The statute, as it currently reads, with regards to the accreditation piece and preschool open doors, it says that the director has to choose from a list of accrediting agencies, and it also says that the director can choose another entity as long as it's comparable to one of those national accreditation agencies. Do you consider HAIS as a comparable entity?
Thank you for the question. I'm going to ask my counterpart, the Regulations Administrator, to help me with this.
Okay, I do, so I just want to know if you do. It's meant to be a leading question.
Hi, thank you for your question, Chair. Currently, we're doing a crosswalk of different types of accreditations and how those standards and competencies align with the NAEYC, or NECPA, or NAFCC. So we still have to do that study and analyze whether or not other types of accreditations would be comparable to those other nationally accredited accreditations.
Okay, thank you so much, HAIS. And so you consider yourself sufficient to identify and help establish high-quality early learning opportunities within the schools that you license?
Yes, I do. Not myself, but my team, and actually, the licensing and accreditation process is you bring groups of people who have the expertise together as visiting teams. The organization has to provide a self-study and go down the list of all the standards and how they meet them or not. The visiting team determines whether that's true or not, and then there is a judgment of whether they can be accredited or licensed.
Okay, thank you so much. Members, any other questions? Seen none, moving on to the next bill. We have SB 832, SD 2, HD 1. First up, we have SFA in support. This is with regards to TPK transfers and SFA exemptions. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. SFA stands in support on our written testimony, and are available for questions. Thank you for being here. Next, we have BNF, offering comments, not here, and also we have city and county also offering comments, land management. Okay, anyone else wishing to provide testimony on SB 832, SD, SB 832, SD 2, HD 1? Members, questions? Seen none, okay, moving on to the next bill, SB 1596, SD 1, HD 1. First, we have SFA, providing testimony also in support. Thank you, Chair.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee. Chad Kiony, Free SFA, we stand in support on our written testimony.
Thank you so much. We have HSTA in support, in person.
Aloha, Chair, members of Vern Moore, speaking on behalf of Osa Tuwi, President of the Hawaii Teachers Association, we support this, and the teachers of Maui tell us there's no housing. They cannot hire anyone because there's no housing, so this is really important. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have HGEA in support, not present, and we also have Madam Chair Alice Lee from Maui, also in support. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony on SB 1596? Seen none, members, are there any questions? Okay, seen none. Moving on to the next bill, we have SB 1344, SD 2. This is with regards to the DOE and health assistance. Again, these last two bills we heard previously, the House companions, and first up, we have DOE, providing testimony in support in person.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committees, members of the Committee, Annie Kalama, testifying on Department, on behalf of the Department of Education. We stand on our written testimony in support and are here for questions.
Thank you so much. Next, we have DOE H in support, in person.
Aloha, Chairs, members of the Committee, I'm Joan Takamori, Public Health Nursing Brand.
I'm Joan Takamori, Public Health Nursing Branch Chief. On behalf of Dr. Kenneth Fink for the Department of Health, we stand on our written testimony in support with offered amendments.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have University of Hawaii in support. They are here. I don't see them here. Next, we have Epilepsy Foundation of Hawaii providing testimony in support, not present. And we also have Hawaii State Center for Nursing in support. And we have one testimony in opposition from an individual, Mr. Silva. Anyone else? Seeing none? Are there any questions? Seeing none. Moving on to the last bill. SB 105, SB 105. First, we have DOE providing testimony in support in person.
Annie Kalama again, offering testimony on behalf of the Department. We stand on our written testimony in support and we're here for questions.
Okay, thank you. And we have one individual testimony in opposition. Ms. Elento, available in person. Yes, please. Please come back. Thank you.
We cannot hear you.
Oh. Okay.
Good afternoon Chair and Vice Chair and members of the Education Committee. I'm Lyndi Elento and I am here, again, I'm opposing this particular bill for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think it is necessary as it is. Maybe we can consider looking at reducing the number of reports. I'm going to tell you why we shouldn't at this point. Just looking briefly at the superintendent's testimony. I was surprised it said, I guess, ABA services are stabilizing. So I don't know if stabilizing means stabilizing in a chaotic state or what. But ABA is very important. And just like I know we've heard previous testimony, I am so grateful that Annie Kalama and her staff are working so hard for the ABA services they are providing. For instance, my child is right here. He's an adult and he was diagnosed with autism, but not at first. The DOE knew he had Down Syndrome. That's enough to qualify for an IEP. And this is the other part of my problem with this particular bill. It's specifying, it's wanting to go from account of children with autism to specifying only children who use the autism category in order to qualify for IDEA. That's going to exclude a lot of students, those who aren't recognized for autism. If that's going to be the, I guess, the qualifying factor as how you measure if you get ABA or not, it's going to be funding. If you ask my DES, the District Educational Specialist, she assures me you don't have to have autism if you need ABA. It's based on need. And I'd like all that to be considered in the report. But again, I bring this up because this is how reports have been done in the past. And I remember several years ago in another type of bill, I was really surprised that the children who don't have the autism category, because there's several categories. Our kids can qualify in lots of them. They just pick one. So I'd like to ask you that you continue, including if you want to know how many people have autism, include all of them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony for SB 105? Seeing none, members, any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you for making for decision-making on several bills. First up, we have SB 1232, SD 1. This authorizes the state librarian to impose fees, charges, and rents with DOE approval. Members, I would like to recommend passing this with a HD 1, defecting the defective date. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Thank you Chair. Voting on SB 1232, SD 1. Chair recommends passing with an HD 1. Chair Vice Chair vote aye, noting the excused absence of Rep. Finman and Rep. Capella for the remainder of the hearing. Rep. Elsley?
Aye.
Rep. LaChica?
Aye.
Rep. Martinez?
Aye.
Rep. Matoyoshi?
Aye.
Rep. Peruso?
Aye.
Rep. Todd?
Aye.
Rep. Garcia?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to SB 1023, SD 1, HD 1. This is the proposal to expand high-quality early learning opportunities against the companion version. Members, I would like to incorporate EOL's amendments to look at Section B, subsections 1 and 2, which is proposed changes under 302L-7 by adding simply the word three, three-year-olds. So that means three and four-year-olds would apply. This basically comports to the existing statutes. We dismiss those two provisions. Also, I would like to accept HCAN's amendments to establish potentially more fluidity within the reimbursement system. And we will also defect the defective date. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Rep.
Sorry Chair, I'd like to request a ruling on a potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
I'm currently an employee of an independent school with a preschool for 24-year-olds.
No conflict for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you Chair. Voting on SB 1023, SD 1. Chair recommends passing with amendments. Chair Vice Chair vote aye. Are there any noes or reservations?
Reservations.
Reservations from Rep. Garcia. Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to SB 832, SD 2, HD 1. This is TMK transfers and SFA exemptions. Members, I want to acknowledge the city and county's concerns. It does take some time to complete some of these processes in terms of conducting surveys, subdivisions, takes time, et cetera, et cetera. However, I would like to move this bill unamended for now. And if we need to decrease the aperture in terms of the amount of TMKs that we allow, we can do that at a later time. Pass unamended. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote?
Chair recommends passing SB 832, SD 2, HD 1, as is. Are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to SB 1596, SD 1, HD 1, SFA and a proposed pilot program for Maui. Members, I would like to pass this unamended. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote?
Chair recommends passing SB 1596, SD 1, HD 1, as is. Are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Going on to SB 1344, SD 2. This is with regards to the DOE and health assistance. Again, the companion is 1046. Members, we would like to re-defect the date. And that is all. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote?
Chair recommends passing SB 1344, SD 2 with amendments. Are there any noes or reservations?
Reservations.
Rep. Garcia, reservation. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Moving on to the last bill. We have SB 105. This changes the reporting requirement to annual. We are still in discussions with the Senate, but for now, we will pass this simply defecting the defective date. We're having discussions as to whether or not it should be annual, semi-annual, or state as is. So for now, we'll pass it, defecting the date. Questions, comments, concerns? Vice Chair for the vote?
Chair recommends passing SB 105 with amendments. Are there any noes or reservations? Seeing none. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you.